All right, good evening, everybody. I have 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd ask if you have not already, please mute your microphones if you're not on the board.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to start with all asking you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, agenda has been laid out. Are there any comments on the agenda from the board?
Not look good.
All right, can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you, Sean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Prove unanimously. Just a reminder to everybody on the call, if you're going to speak, since this is being recorded, not everyone will see a video, please remember to identify yourself. All right, next order of business is approval of the minutes from our July 13th meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the July 13th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Kate. Do we have any discussion on the minutes as written?
No, I don't think, no, I didn't have anything.
Okay, having hearing none, motion is on the floor to approve. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, motion carries unanimously. All right, next order of business is public comments. I would ask your patience on this because I imagine we're going to have a few. I've got some to read before we start. It just may be difficult getting, sorting out the order of who's going to talk. That's all I'm saying. I'm reminding, reminding everyone you're limited to three minutes per comment. But I will read what we have received by email. First comment is Marie Lippincourt. Marie writes, Dear Mr. McGary, I'm writing in response to your letter condemning the racist and misogynistic internet posting of our elected officials, Dan Louiezy and Larry Madja. I stand out and I'm proud you lead with such class and integrity. I sincerely thank you. I'm glad we can agree that hate has no place here and this behavior should not reflect the future of Haddon. PZC officials that are openly biased and hateful towards so many is frankly dangerous. These men should resign. I hope to see Republican Town Committee, who endorses these men publicly condemn this behavior as well. Our children are watching and learning. It's time to be the example. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Marie Lippincourt. Next comment is from the Haddon Democratic Town Committee. Statement from the Haddon Democratic Town Committee on recent social media posts by elected officials. We were saddened and disturbed by the recent and ongoing social media posts from two Republican Planning and Zoning Commission PZC members, most recently those that attacked Vice Presidential Candidate Kamala Harris in a sexist and racist manner. These posts reflect badly on the individuals and we were happy to see that both of these men apologized. However, at a time of heightened awareness regarding sexism, racism, and bias, we are concerned that their comments also reflect poorly upon our community, especially when we are doing so much to revitalize Higginham and Haddon, present our town as a centerpiece for outdoor recreation, and increase our commercial activity. The Haddon Democratic Town Committee believes these three individuals, these individuals posts do not represent the attitude of our community, our town governance, or the goals of our PZC. The scope and responsibility of the PZC requires it to consider the impact of racism and bias in their work. These zoning regulations can be established either inadvertently or purposely that can be biased toward lower-income people and people of color. Trust in our planning and zoning process is essential. We therefore request that these individuals resign from their elected office. We would also like to work with the Board of Selectmen to set a voluntary code of standards for all elected officials to follow, which discourages expression of bias, racism, or sexism in their communication, including those expressed on social media and other online platforms. The final submitted comment I have comes from Jane Baird. In a small town like Haddon, we live together, attend church together, we shop in each other's stores by Christmas trees from each other, plow and shovel each other's driveways, see each other at school and sports events, and our children are friends in school. The closeness of our community makes it all the more shocking when we see residents post sexist and other bigoted statements on their social media, even to their private accounts. While freedom of speech is an essential aspect of our society, speech has always held consequences. Haddon's reputation as a fair, civil, gracious, and welcoming community is important to me, and I'm sure everyone. I'm glad these individuals have apologized and I'm thankful for the statement from Bob McGary, the Haddams Lions Clubs, and others. To help address future conduct, I propose we adopt the code of standard for public officials and establish a Board of Ethics to oversee both public employees and public elected officials. While we have no way to quote "fire" and quote "an elected official," nor would I want such power to override the people's votes, I do think we'd all be helped by developing a code of standard that sets expectation on language, including on social media, consistent with what most businesses and organizations have for their employees or members. I would ask that Bob McGary appoint a bipartisan commission to develop these codes to be voted on at a future town meeting. Thank you, Jane Baird. That takes care of all the written comments I have received. With this point, I will open it for comments from the floor. Again, just a reminder to everybody, you're limited to three minutes. And Tim, I see you waving your hand. Would you like to open it for us, please?
Thank you, Bob.
Tim Teran.
I'm going to read a statement on behalf of Peter Baird and myself, Tim Teran, both members of the Haddon Board of Finance.
Tim, I can see you're talking and it looks like your microphone is live, but I know personally I'm not hearing it. Are others hearing Tim all right?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear him.
Yeah, I can hear him.
Okay, I'm here, Tim. Sorry, I must have an audio problem here.
My bad, sorry. I'll try and speak a little louder if that works a little better. This is just a statement from Peter Baird and myself as members of the Board of Finance in Haddon, concerning the recent sexism, racism, and bias expressed by the two Haddon elected officials. We believe in accepting apologies when people make mistakes, but we struggle to accept them when they come from individuals who have demonstrated a longstanding pattern of such comments. These were not mistakes. They were the purposeful actions of two individuals seeking to fuel racism and affect them in our town. We're grateful to first selectman Bob McGary for his comments on Saturday stating that recent posts of these individuals are reprehensible and do not reflect the values upon which our community is based. However, when it was brought to our attention that a pattern of longstanding bias has been exhibited by these two, we felt we must do more to put an end to the divisiveness on the part of elected officials that threaten not only our town's reputation, they threaten our ability to conduct business in a fair and just manner. Now, to be clear, these posts are part of a longstanding pattern. You are just two of the many comments I have read in the past. Some time ago, one of them commented on Facebook, and now I quote, "Trump has to fix what the app breach screwed up." I suggest in reference to our prior president. Perhaps worse, the other chair, Niamh, that actually de facto endorses white supremacy, again, I quote, "Morning signs of white supremacy, full-time employment, literacy, unprofessional or technical degree, attending regular churches for temple services, having car insurance, having a good credit rating, and no criminal record." Neither of the recent posts are isolated or even rare, and these are not the remarks of some group of misguided people. These remarks were made by two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Eleven officials entrusted with the power to decide what land use is approved for which individuals. Their ongoing posts on social media make us question whether they have the objectivity and sensitivity quality of their job in a way that makes us feel proud. At a time when as a community we express a strong desire to attract new people to Haddon, especially young people, Peter and I feel that neither Planning and Zoning Commission members demonstrate the ethics, the moral fortitude, the openness to represent our town. It pains us deeply to say these things, yet we feel we must. But we also feel we have an obligation to not just speak up, but to offer a solution to put an end to this widespread bias by elected officials. So what should we do? What's our ask, Bob? We ask that a bipartisan commission be established to institute sensitivity and ethics training for all elected officials, the kind of training that state representatives and corporate executives have been required to complete on an annual basis for years. To ensure this is bipartisan effort, we would also further ask the selectman Kate Anderson and Dawn Moriarty spearhead this commission with a mandate of bringing first selectman Bob McGary, a plan that can be executed at the beginning of the next calendar year. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you, and thank you for listening.
Is Bob still there?
It looks like, yeah, thank you, Tim. It looks like Bob temporarily left, maybe to try to fix his audio issues.
Thank you, Tim, for that statement. That's the first I've heard of. I know that we had talked about this commission having me spearheaded. I would be interested in doing that, though, and thank you for thinking of me.
Caller 01 joined. Bob, is that you? All right, sorry, everyone. I think we should all wait until Bob returns so he doesn't miss anything.
I'm going to send him a quick text.
Yeah, Bob just sent me a message that asked for Sean to run the, it looks like he's back.
I'm back. There we go, yay. Clearly, I'm having computer problems here. Tim, I've got your written statement. I'm sorry, I wasn't there to listen to the entire thing, or frankly, hear any of it. But I assume that was what you presented. Sean, I'd ask you if I drop off again, because I don't know why I had to the first time. Please take over for me until I can get back.
Will do.
Thank you.
We didn't hear my comment to Tim was, that was the first I knew about the formation of a committee and them asking me to spearhead. That's fine, but that's something as a board we would have to, that's the first time hearing that, and we can discuss it perhaps.
Yeah, I agree. Something has to be done going forward, but particularly in the interest of time. I don't want to get into a long discussion on this tonight. It's not on the agenda, but it's a valid point. I'm not disputing that. Thank you, Tim. Do we have other comments? All right, Neil, I think you want to make a comment. Neil Parent?
Yeah, Neil Parent, Haddon Neck. I think I'm unmuted now. The only thing I need to touch upon with the comments made on Facebook is I was in a position on the Board of Ed where I had to make the decision due to work in family matters. I had to put the town first and not myself. So I ended up resigning so somebody that had more time could take that position I was elected for, where they could put the time and commitment and where they're concentrating on that position on the board. Larry and Dan, I've but heads with before. We've, you know, are gentlemen with each other, and I would ask them to, you know, take a deep breath, sit back, and see what's more important to you, your personal opinion on Facebook, on social media, or the betterment of our town to move it forward, regardless of what party you're with, because we're all about our town and not our individual selves sometimes, and that's my only opinion on that. The only other thing with the storm, I know there's stuff always going on behind the scenes. Bob, being my chief, we know how we are always trying to be proactive than reactive, and maybe it's something you can talk to Chris about. This used to be done a lot with Phil. When we know there's a big storm coming, we knew we were going to get high winds with this one. There's any possible way of the town crews can maybe, you know, two town crew guys with a truck at each firehouse like it used to be done. So once everything dies down, some of these roads can be opened up. I mean, out here in Haddon Neck, we are the redheaded stepchild of the town, and we didn't have a crew out here for two and a half days. So, you know, hats off to the town crews by all means, but something where we can be a little bit more proactive if possible than being reactive. And that's it.
All right, this is Bob. Thank you, Neil. Anybody else who wants to make any comment? Okay, Brenda?
Brenda Buzzzy speaking as a citizen right now. I'm just curious to hear what the Republican Party has to say about what's going on in light of the Facebook posts. We've heard cricket, so have you heard anything, Bob?
I have, have not.
All right, that's all. Just curious. We haven't heard anything.
Okay. All right, thank you, Brenda. Any other public comments? If someone, all I know is caller one. If you would like to make comment, your microphone is open. All right, this is Bob, caller one. I've got nothing intelligible. Can anyone else, Sean, Kate, either one of you here, what's being said?
Okay. It just sounds like background noise. This is Sean.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. The microphone's on, but they're just background noise. Joanne, can you mute that call, please? All right, the last call. Anybody else for public comments? All right, I see none, then let us continue. Thank you for the comments received. All right, next order on the agenda, the Selectmen's update. Again, I'll give my update and then ask for other selectmen to kick in, either as I'm talking or afterwards. But my update for this meeting, Project Fly Scoville Ho, the town, not town, the state garage, Candlewood Hill. Finally, we got permission from the state to access the site, or more importantly, for our engineering consulting firm to access the site to do the environmental and structural evaluation. We held a kickoff meeting on site on August 6th. The company was there. They had a number of their specialists and representatives there. They did a preliminary walkthrough on the property. Some of the specialties and trades will probably be going back for an update, but that process of getting that evaluation work has started. Tylerville Water Project, hookups continue. We're down to the last few. There is an issue about getting service to 109 Little Meadow, which comes into Eagle Landing Road, and then, other than that, is landlocked. We're looking at three options to get the service there. Two are difficult to construct. One would require getting eminent domain on another property owner. We're just trying to evaluate at this point which is the best route to go. I'm waiting to get some updates on construction costs from the construction company, and I had a, excuse me, I had a meeting with our town attorney and the manager from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to talk about the project and where we are. So they're up to date on it, and that's moving forward. Rossi Property, the owners, the Rossi's, have gotten a formal appraisal of the property. Bill Warner and I met with them just this afternoon for them to present the appraisal to us, and just to continue our discussion on going forward. I will be coming to the Board of Selectmen meeting. I think our next one is only two weeks away, so probably that meeting will do to talk about a contract, terms of a contract, negotiation strategy, and how to move forward with it. Roadwork, Christian Hill is the major ongoing project right now. Grinding is the first step to the paving. It should start, it's scheduled for next week. Town crew has done some drainage work on Christian Hill. They've still got some finish work to do in Haddon Neck, aprons, and a couple other minor things, but the roadwork is continuing. Unfortunately, the storm has knocked the town crew's schedule back probably by about two weeks, and how that'll ultimately affect what we get done for the roadwork this year is yet to be determined. But Christian Hill's starting again next week. The next road on the list is Lieutenant Chubel. That's going to be followed by Dublin Hill. We'll see how that all goes. Other things to talk about, Neil already touched on it, storm. I asked, outages affected almost the entire town. EverSource's response to this outage was, I think, sorely lacking, and I have yet to hear a chief elected official.
I don't know how to put this on speaker.
Yeah, please, public comment is over. Please make sure your microphones are on mute. Anyway, restoration priorities for the towns are all, let's do the make-safe work, that's, get the roads clear so we can get emergency vehicles through, so people are not trapped in neighborhoods. EverSource has always said that's their priority, and also restoring power to critical facilities such as hospitals, fire stations, police stations, elderly care facilities similar to Saberwick at Home, group homes. But in practice, they seem to be focused on restoration of customers only and not clearing roads. I know I had a Priority One request to clear a road. Priority One is the highest. It says "life threat" attached to it, and they didn't get to that road until Tuesday, a full week after the storm. There will be much further discussion. Neil, you raised some good point about town crew, but this matter will not stay here. The pure is investigating it. My advice to everyone, as you learn from this storm, hopefully, you should be prepared at the face of any of these storms to be isolated for three days before any help gets to you. Hopefully that. All right, next item I want to talk about, budget. Concern we've had is how tax collections are going to go in view of the impact of the pandemic. Fortunately, it looks like right now, actually, July tax collections were significantly higher percentage-wise than last year, but I believe, the tax collector believes that was due to some escrow accounts getting posted either earlier or than they were, that they might have been in the first week of August last year. The big tell will be at the end of August, but in general, we're both comfortable. It seems like tax collections are on track to pretty much match percentage-wise what we got last year. So at least at the moment, it doesn't look like we're taking any sort of a major hit as a result of the pandemic. Certainly hope that continues. But the end of this month will be a better tell. Public health issues, COVID-19. I put out an update last week. We are now up to 45 cases, still only one fatality. Couple other things have cropped up in the ensuing time since the last meeting. West Nile virus today. Department of Public Health announced the first West Nile virus case was identified in Connecticut. West Nile virus is a mosquito-borne illness. It becomes a concern every summer for the vast majority of people. If you get symptoms, it's flu-like and relatively minor, but not for everybody. On rare occasions, it is fatal. So public health is recommending, just as they do every year this time, you know, be careful when mosquitoes are out. Use repellent, wear long-sleeved shirts, et cetera, et cetera. Along the same lines, equine encephalitis, triple E, eastern equine encephalitis, triple E, is also a big summer concern prior to COVID being our big health concern. It was a thing the health departments were all worried about. State of Massachusetts in the last month has reported their first case from triple E. We have not gotten any in Connecticut, but the same mosquito precautions apply, so please be careful when you're outside. Couple more things to talk about. Next one's a primary. It was held, as you know, August 11th. Overall, things went well. I thought things went very well in view of the strain that the pandemic has put on the whole system. We did have enough poll workers to open all three locations. My thanks to everyone who stepped up and volunteered. We had 705 absentee ballots cast in that primary. Just to give you an idea of a level set on that idea, Scott Brooks, the town clerk, says typically for a presidential election, which is the big one we all vote in, highest turnout, they only get requests for about 400 absentee ballots. So in this primary, which, as I've said, we all know, really doesn't make a lot of difference in the upcoming presidential election, we had almost double that for absentee ballots. There were some glitches with the system, most of which are on the state side. Ballots were mailed out late. Hopefully, the state will be able to rectify that for the upcoming election, because I, as I've said all along, I imagine we'll be doing this again in November, still under the impact of the pandemic. Final note on the primary, there was a recount conducted throughout the second district congressional race. On the Republican side only, there was an endorsed candidate and a challenger, so there was a primary for that position. The recount was completed today in the town, and we're waiting to see what the official results are for this whole election. Once again, I'd ask you to mute your microphone. Someone's got a live. Mike? Couple more things to talk about. We had a town meeting and town hearing last month, or since our last Board of Selectmen meeting, town hearing addressed two items, one being the presentation of the report on the Charter Revision Committee, which was presented without questions from the audience. Second thing being a copy provided in discussion on a proposed ordinance to establish a public water control authority. Statutorily, that's required if we are going to have the community septic that has been talked about at Haddon Elementary. Purpose of the hearing was just to present the papers on it, copies of it, to the audience. It'll take some time to digest. There was no questions on that either. Both will be, if they're not already available, on the website for review, and both of which would have to be approved at a town meeting, which will be scheduled for, excuse me. The ordinance would have to be through a town meeting. We'll schedule that sometime in the future and possibly another hearing before that. The Charter Revision question to approve or not will be on the November ballot. We also had a town meeting that day. It was to vote on a replacement for the Board of Ed vacancy. Prem Athol, in a very close race, was selected. We conducted votes both in person in the HK High School Auditorium, and also a number of people voted by just driving by. The registrar was outside of the table. We had all told, I think about 160-some people voted, which is by far the largest vote I've seen at any town meeting. It's a process we will probably be using again going forward. Overall, it went well. Last thing I want to touch on, and I already mentioned it the last update, farmer's market again. The farmer's market continues to grow. Last Friday's had over 370 customers come into the market. It was also the kids' market, which I know was part of the draw. The market continues to improve. My thanks to Economic Development and the Market Master Kate for the work they're doing, or Kristy, rather, excuse me. And with that, I'll open it up. Kate, do you have any other comments on the market?
I do. It was actually over 470 people. The goal is to break 500 at some point. I do. If I can just make a couple comments, I took some notes as you were going down. I'm just going to go in the same order you went in. So the first thing I wanted to touch on is, Bob, your response to the storm. So I got to spend a couple hours in town hall and the days succeeding the storm, and I just want to give a shout out to Bob for just his very diligent succeeding the storm, and I just want to give a shout out to Bob, um, for just his very diligent efforts in trying to get any sort of updates from ever source. Uh, unfortunately, you know, it's we were all subject to the lack of communication from ever source and town hall and Bob was no different at all. So Bob, thank you for trying to stay on top of it, you know, while it didn't seem entirely successful. I just want people to know that you were working very hard behind the scenes. Um, and actually related to that topic, um, I just wanted to throw out the idea. I had a conversation with people, um, and I saw this suggestion online too, that maybe we could have some sort of community, community meeting to talk about emergency planning, um, you know, maybe identify, is there a list of people in town who should be priority, you know, whether, you know, not even for power restoration, just, you know, a list of people that we can check on and almost kind of assign like a buddy system. Um, you know, and just as we all know, the only way we can get better is if we talk and discuss and make new plans for moving forward. You know, it's, this seems, these kind of disasters seem to be a much more common occurrence than they were before. So, you know, we have to be a little more flexible and innovative when trying to deal with these. Um, so just wanted to throw out the idea of maybe some sort of community input meeting on emergency services. Um, and lastly, also just wanted again to thank all of the volunteers and the registrars who have put in very long hours relating to elections um, between the, the Board of Ed election and the innovative drive through voting we saw. Um, and then all the way down to the primary we had last week. I actually was trained to be a poll worker, so that last election was my first election. Um, and it's, it's a really fascinating process. It's a very long day for people who don't know. Um, like an everyday worker, you show up at five fifteen in the morning and you're there until eight thirty, nine o'clock at night. It's a very long day. Um, but it was really amazing to see how seriously everyone took it. Everyone was very dedicated. Um, you know, really took it very seriously. So, um, it's, while we do get paid for it, um, it's still a volunteer effort and everybody really put their best foot forward. So shout out to all the election volunteers and the registrars. You guys really do a phenomenal job and it's, you don't really appreciate it until you live it. So I really have a new appreciation for that. Um, yep. And then finally, the farmer's market is going tremendously well, um, but at the same time with growth comes the need for volunteers. So if there are any volunteers, um, who are available, we can take people as early as two o'clock in the afternoon all the way up until closing at six thirty. Um, we also are open to high school, um, community service hours. If you have a student who needs community service, um, they will be working, um, but we definitely can take all the help we can get. You can reach out to the Market Master, Kristy Benson. Her information is on the Higginham Market page.
All right, Kate. Thank you. Sean, any comments or anything to add?
Yeah, um, firstly, I want, just the, uh, the storm response by the Public Works was phenomenal. I've got a lot of comments from, uh, different citizens who are very happy with our, our Public Works and, and, and the work they did to, to clear roads and, um, and make, uh, make, make life easier for everybody. And, uh, just echo everybody else's, um, you know, thanks about the, the elections. I, I voted in the primary and and, uh, the town meetings and things seemed to go very smooth. And just thank you for all the people that volunteered for that.
Yeah, and I, there, I didn't mention it during my talk on the, the storm, but I really do have to add my thanks and recognize the effort of Kevin McManus, our Assistant Emergency Management Director. He put in a lot of hours, a lot of coordination, uh, involved with our response. He did an excellent job and I appreciate it. And also there were a number of volunteer staffing of the Hattam Neck Fire Station as a cooling station, a couple of the locations, and my thanks go out to them as well.
And this is Kate. Bob, um, one last thing, this might be a good opportunity to plug the Everbridge Communication System for people who, I think there's still a lot of people who might not know about it, and I'm sure you can explain it better than I can.
Good point, Kate. I'll talk about it briefly. Because of COVID, we contracted with a company called Everbridge so we can make announcements. They can go out to people have to sign up for it, but they can go out to your cell phone, to your emails, to your regular phone, uh, all of the above. You get to choose. The system we had years ago when we were part of Chatham Health District and used during emergencies. But when we moved to the, uh, Pratt Health District, Connecticut River Health District, uh, they don't have that system, but we, we have reestablished ties with Everbridge. You can see information on it on the town website. I can't over encourage everybody to sign up for it. Uh, we put out notices on where cooling stations were, where important emergency announcements. Uh, it's really important that you sign up for it. And I would also again encourage everyone to sign up for just the normal town alert so you get information about meetings, announcements by the town, and again, you get to customize what you want. Uh, the worst thing in a storm is being not connected, so please consider signing up if you have not already. All right, next item, Brenda, I know you're here. Board of Education update, please.
Okay, good evening. The hat I'm going to put on now is for the Board of Education, Brenda Buzzy, Hattam. So this is a summary for July twenty twenty. Cougar Pride. On July seventeenth, the class of twenty twenty celebrated their graduation together. The commencement, which followed state guidelines for distancing, began with a procession through the parking lot where proud friends and family cheered and waved from their cars. Seniors paraded to their seats on the football field for the school's first graduation ceremony under the lights. Large movie screens and speakers were placed in the parking lot for families to view the entire ceremonies from their cars. And they showed their support afar by honking their horns after each speech and as the graduates cross the stage to receive their diplomas. Next year, which is in a couple of weeks, um, the reopening committee, under the directive of Governor Lamont, all school districts were required to develop a three tiered plan to reopen schools safely in the fall with details required for an in-person learning model, a hybrid learning model, and a remote learning model in the event of COVID cases increased. The state defined guidelines in early July that schools should plan to have all students return in school on a full-time basis. In-classroom logistics included heightened safety measures such as wearing masks, cohorting students together, and increasing cleaning uh, protocols at each school. The hybrid plan is a combination of in-class learning and remote learning to reduce the number of students in the building in one time. In late July, Governor Lamont reversed the requirement for all students to return to school full-time and instead gave districts flexibility, flexibility in how they opened. RSD seventeen's reopening committee decided hybrid learning would be the best balance of safety and instructional delivery for the first month of school during this highly unusual time. This traditional transitional, excuse me, this transitional month will allow students to be in smaller class cohorts, giving teachers time to build relationships, foster academic growth, and attempt to social and emotional learning while teaching students new rules and protocols. Parents are able to opt into the, uh, remote learning model instead and can transition between the two as best suits their family needs. Details of this plan and all other reopening communications can be found on rsdseventeen.org website. Um, here I just want to thank the committee, um, the superintendent and, um, but a lot of teachers and some board members over the summer got together and spent hours and hours and hours to do that. So thank you to Superintendent Hagman and committee. The first day of school, the state also announced that it allowed districts to increase the number of professional development days at the beginning of the school year. Teachers and staff will use these days to train, to be trained on new health and safety protocols, teaching strategies for in-person and remote learning as well as for classroom setup and continued facility preparation. This reduces the number of required student dates from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and seventy-seven. Therefore, the board amended the school year calendar and the new first day of school for students will be Tuesday, September first. The superintendent's contract. The board evaluated the first year of Dr. Hagman's role as superintendent as a very unique year with significant changes and will represent the evaluation as soon as practical, will present it as. The superintendent formally requested to evergreen her contract for a third year. The maximum allowed by the state for superintendent contracts, to which the board unanimously agreed. On our rsdseventeen.org website, you can view the district's reopening plans and FAQ under Superintendent's School Reopening Updates at the top of the page. Additionally, you can watch the video from the class of twenty twenties graduation ceremony under community slash HK TV. Then click here to view channel eighteen live. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brenda. Um, one comment I'd like to make, just a reminder to people. We are seeing, this goes back to COVID, an increase in cases statewide. I would strongly recommend this. Unfortunately, the start of school offers another opportunity with groups together for cases to increase. So I would just like to remind everyone, please pay attention to the COVID restrictions, recommendations for face coverings, et cetera. I know it's easy to get lax. I find myself getting lax about it at times because it's been going on so long. But particularly when school starts, be careful. It's just another opportunity for infection to spread. I know they're taking precautions. It's nothing derogatory about the school system, just a reminder to all of us. Again, thank you, Brenda. All right. Next item I have on the agenda. Tax refunds. We have application for two tax refunds. They are both motor vehicle tax refunds. The total amount is six hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And I have a motion to approve the tax refunds as submitted.
I'll make, uh, this is Sean. I'll make a motion. We accept the tax refunds.
Yeah. Hey. Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on the request, on the motion? Okay, thank you. Joanne, somebody has a live mic. Could you please mute it? All right, hearing no discussion on the motion to approve the tax refunds. Call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we have three in favor, none opposed. The motion carries. Next item to discuss new business. Top of the new business are two separate contracts between our, the town and our two unions. Just to give you some quick background, both contracts expired one July of this year. The contracts that had expired were three-year contracts. We approached both unions with the thought of, given the uncertainty of the financial collection for taxes and the impact from COVID, we didn't want to negotiate a three-year contract. Because we didn't think, or at least I didn't think we could do so with good faith as to how much we would have to support that contract financially. Proposed two options to the unions. Either freeze wages and freeze their contribution percentage to healthcare or a two percent raise and one percent increase in their healthcare shares. Uh, there was discussion back and forth. We were pushed to grant more. We held firm to the two percent, one percent. And in both these contracts, that's what you'll see. Uh, there are other items on the contracts that were just administrative cleanups. Things like the Janus Court case, Supreme Court ruling on labor union, public labor unions. Uh, made some of the language in our contracts illegal. Those have been cleaned up. Some language that no longer applies because it had to do with employees who have since left or aged out with length of service has been deleted. Uh, but like I said, the major change are for a one-year period, two percent increase in wages, one percent increase in healthcare contributions. With that, I'll turn to my fellow board members. I need, let's start with the Teamsters contract. Which is for the obviously Department of Public Works. Do you have any comments, questions, or concerns about that contract proposal?
This is Sean. I, I read through them. Um, you know, they're pretty basic changes administrative. As you said, administrative changes, and I don't think there's really a whole lot to discuss, so raise the two percent, one percent is usable.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
This is Kate. Yeah, this is Kate. I do agree. I had a quick question um, on the clerical one. Um, I noticed, so I, uh, page four going into page five. So it looks like the assistant assessor and the accounting clerk now work Monday through Thursday. Uh, what's the benefit to that? Or why was that changed instead of the Monday through Friday with the more staggered hours?
It was a combination on both of them. They got hourly wages raises. So we reduced somewhat the hours, uh, for the assistant assessor. And it'll be a moot point by the end of the meeting. We also had almost, yeah, almost an hour's drive time to and from. So she preferred to change the work hours just to cut down on the commuting and both of them were getting their work done in the allotted time. We were agreeable to those changes.
Great, thank you. Kate, again, um, so let's, okay, so for example, the assistant assessor. Um, so if, if somebody resigns and somebody new takes that position, this contract, if they elect to join the union, you know, they'll just, this contract will just take over for them.
Yeah, whether they elect to join the union or not, if this is, and I'm learning every day about this stuff. The union contract covers the positions, which means descriptions, hours, and wages. Whether a member joins the union or not, they get what's written in the contract.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, it would. But as a note, we eliminated the assistant tax collector position earlier this year. We're not going to fill it. We are looking at possibly combining the assistant tax collect, assistant to the tax collector, assistant to the tax assessor into a shared position. Uh, but we're in the very, very early stages of that. The union to have to agree to it. And we haven't even, we just started talking about it today, so. And if that happens, it'll be a new position that has to be worked into the contracts by an agreement between us.
This is, uh, Sean. Okay, with that Janus decision, um, basically they're still covered under the contract. They just lose any protections from the union. Say, we move to terminate them, the union won't help them out if they're not. But they still get covered by the union contract for wages and benefits.
Got it. Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, and just as a note, even a probationary member who technically is not a member of the union gets covered by the contract. Kind of interesting. Anyway, if I could, is there any further discussion on either of the contracts?
This is Sean. It looked pretty straightforward.
All right, I'll call for a vote on each of them individually. Can I have an order listed on the agenda? And I have a motion to approve the CSEA union contract as presented.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve the CSEA union contract as presented.
All right, thank you, Kate. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous vote. And now entertain a motion to approve the Teamsters contract covering the Department of Public Works employees.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Teamsters contract. This is Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So then again, unanimous vote. The DPW union contract is approved. Next item we have under new business. We have three resignations. First one is from Prem Athol. He is residing his position as an alternate on the Board of Finance because of his election to the Board of Education. Uh, he writes to town. He writes to town, Scott Brooks, a town clerk. Scott, dear Scott, I'd like to submit my resignation effective immediately, and this is dated July 28th. As an alternate on the Haddon Board of Finance, consistent with my campaign promise that I made, should I, were to win the open position on the Board of Ed. As a Board of Education, as very time-sensitive items, namely a pandemic that demand urgent and detailed analysis, I would like to devote my full attention to that work. I would like to formally thank the Board of Selectmen, Kate Anderson, Sean Moriarty, and Bob McGarry for considering me and appointing me to the Board of Finance when there was a seat available. I also want to thank Joseph Santafonte, Chair of the Haddon Board of Finance, for his great direction in helping me get up to speed very quickly on the BOF. Finally, I would like to thank the Haddon Republican Town Committee and Sam Crum and Ed Munster for nominating me for the Board of Ed, as well as my previous role on the Board of Finance. I look forward to hopefully making everyone proud as I serve the town and adjoining towns in the district on the Board of Education. Warm regards, Prem Athol. Next notice we have is Sabine, from Sabine Nianhaus. Sabine is, for those of you who don't know, one of the workers at the transfer station. She submitted it on July 27th. To whom it may concern, I am hereby tendering my resignation as part-time transfer station attendant for the town of Haddon effective August 8th, 2020. I want to thank you all for being wonderful employer and great people. I've really enjoyed my time working for the town of Haddon, and it has been a great pleasure to meet all of you. I've become friends with many of the citizens of Haddon that I would otherwise not have met. Thank you and God bless. Signed, Sabina. And I will be sorry to see her go, as well as Prem. Final resignation we have is Debbie Kopp. She was the assistant assessor. We had mentioned that position a minute ago. Dated July 28th this year, to Tammy Anderson. Dear Tammy Anderson, please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from my position as assistant assessor. My last day of employment will be August 11th, 2020. I received an offer to serve as an assessor for a neighboring town. And after careful consideration, I realize this opportunity is too exciting for me to decline. It has been a pleasure working with you and the Haddon staff over the last two years. I am incredibly grateful and appreciative for having the opportunity to work in the Assessor's Office for the town of Haddon. Sincerely, Deborah Kopp. Again, as with the other two, Deb will be missed. She was quite an asset. But I'm not surprised once she got certified as a tax assessor. The fact that she moved up is just the way things happen in the smaller towns, but I am sorry to see them go. All right, before I move on to appointments, any comments by any of the other selectmen?
This is Sean. Thank you to all three. And look forward to continuing to work with Prem and the other two. Good luck in their futures.
Okay.
This is Kate, exactly the same. Thank you, everybody. And I, I believe Sabine was the one who ran the Facebook Transfer Station page and posted photos of very cute dogs that visit the transfer station. So if somebody could please continue that, that is a nice highlight of my weekend.
Well, we might be able to work it into a job description. Of course, we'd have to negotiate that with the union, but it was worthwhile. I, I agree. That was an interesting Facebook page. All right, moving on to the next. We have two appointments to make. First one is for the Board of Finance. This is a letter from Brenda Buzzy, Chairwoman, Haddon Democratic Town Committee, to Scott Brooks. Greetings, Mr. Brooks. Please be advised that the position of Board of Finance that Robin Spencer recently, sorry, Robin, I'm not even going to try the last name, recently resigned from will be filled by Sandra Olson, 15 Sergeant Morgan Road, Haddon Neck, 06424 with her phone number and email. Best regards, Brenda Buzzy. Brenda, thank you for the recommendation. Board of Selectmen actually has to make the appointment based on your recommendation. So I will open the floor to my other two board members. Any comments on approving Sandy as the replacement for Robin?
This is Sean. Now, I've known Sandy for a number of years now. She'll do a very fine job.
This is Kate. Yes, I, yes, I think Sandy attends a lot of meetings in town, and she's definitely up to speed. I will say, I'm, I, I think the, the person who resigned, I'm a little disappointed. I, I don't think she made it to any meetings. So it, so I'm glad we'll have Sandy on board, who can, who I think already attends the meeting as, as public anyway. So she'll, no learning curve for her. Thank you, Sandy, for volunteering.
This is Bob, and I'll echo those. I know Sandy, she has been at most of the meetings. I'm sure she will be a good member on our Board of Finance. So that said, can I have a motion to approve Sandy Olson to the alternate position that was opened up on the Board of Finance?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, except, I point, this is Sean, I'll make a motion, we appoint Sandy to the Board of Finance. Sandy Olson.
All right, motion has been made. Any further comment on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of appointing Sandy Olson to the Board of Finance, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, three in favor, if unanimous, Sandy has been appointed to the position. Last appointment we have to do is our Municipal Agent for the Elderly. Jessica Condal currently holds that position. She was appointed. It's a term of service either two years or four years. We get to choose as a board how long we want to appoint it. My recommendation is we reappoint Jessica to the position. She, of course, is interested in continuing it. I will say she is doing an excellent job in that dual role of municipal agent and director of our social services. And I personally would recommend a four-year tour term for her. With that, comments from other board members?
This is Kate. Yes, I agree. Jessica does an outstanding job. I hear nothing but great things about her, so I would happily recommend reappointment for her.
This is Sean. I'll echo that. If we can keep her for four more years, that's fantastic. You can keep her for 10 more years, that's fantastic.
Thank you, Sean. I agree. Unfortunately, I don't think this indentures are to us, but we can hope. I'll tell her it does regardless. Can I have a formal motion to appoint Jessica Condal to the position of Municipal Agent for the Elderly for a term of four years?
This is Kate. I recommend, I make a motion that we appoint Jessica Condal for a four-year appointment as the Municipal Agent for the Elderly.
Thank you, Kate. This is Bob. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, once again, it's unanimous. Jessica is reappointed to the Municipal Agent for the Elderly for a four-year term. With that, we have come to the end of our agenda. I'd like to thank everyone who attended and participated in tonight's meeting. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
This is Kate, 7:28, motion to adjourn.
I have one comment. That's a great sunset, Neil.
I wish I had my video. I lost it. I think that's why earlier I didn't have any audio because there were too many webcams on my little computer.
You're asking for too much, Bob.
I am just trying to lighten the mood. I'm just trying to lighten the mood that we all need.
Yeah, obviously, the string going to my tin can here got a little too slack to handle. All right, everyone, thank you very much. I'll note the time, 7:28, and this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.